Let me hit record. Okay, welcome everybody to the Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is six oh two P M. And we're meeting virtually today. Uh, we'll start with a roll call of Planning and Zoning Commissioners. This is Amanda Podmore, Chair.
Ed Dobson.
Malia Collins.
Thank you all. And Brian Whitney is not here yet, um, from the town.
Luanne Hook.
Thank you, Luanne, and welcome, uh, guests and other very important folks. So, um, for our agenda tonight, uh, we're going to, we will open with public comment and approval of minutes, and then we're gonna, I suggest that we switch the order of the agenda so that we can have, uh, Mike and Jacob Hanson join, uh, start to kick off the meeting after that. So I will first open it up for a public comment. So if anybody would like to make a public comment up to three minutes in length, please let me know. Alrighty, hearing none, I will close public comment period. Okay, let's turn over to approval of meeting minutes from our regular meeting on April third and then also on our work session on April twelfth. So we'll start with April third. I know we have some comments in there. Can folks see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay. Oh, we're missing the second on this one.
Yeah, I didn't know how to help. I didn't hear. I didn't.
Um. I would have to.
Hi, I'm sorry. It, it didn't show up on the video, the YouTube. Um, but I just now went back to try, and if I can hear it correctly, which was hard to do, I think it was Ed Dobson.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure. I mean, it wa- it was the audio on the, the, um, state website recording was hard to hear also. Yeah, thanks. Sorry about that, guys. I didn't want to interrupt the meeting and say, hey, wait.
No problem. You're always welcome to interrupt us too. So, okay. Leave that changed and then scrolling down under Old Business, under Scheduling and Enforcement Discussion, Marsha amended the second sentence to say Haydenfeld said she wanted a better understand, to better understand who should report a suspected violation to whom, and it was suggested to include a space for recording the reporting prop party on enforcement paperwork. Nelson stated that it will need to be determined who is responsible for addressing, addressing violations equitably. Everybody good with those changes?
Yes.
Yes, that sounds great.
Okay. Then under Item Five, Building Permits and Land Use Clearances, uh, just a typo correction from Marsha. I believe that's all the changes to those meeting minutes.
Awesome.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes for April fir- April third as.
Second. Ooh, who got it?
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of, of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Um, okay, now on to the meeting minutes from.
Amanda, let the record reflect that Brian did join us.
Oh, welcome, Brian.
Hi, Brian.
Hey, guys. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah. I know you're a working guy. Okay, so now we're looking at the work session minutes from April twelfth. Um, in the first paragraph, under Discussing Ownership Issues of the Horton Land Use Clearance, Marsha clarified in the first sentence, um, it was discovered that there were multiple owners of the lot, but only the signature of the one owner, the applicant, was submitted. And then she said later on, the primary responsibility of zoning is whether the proposal meets ordinance requirements state set, colon, uh, state statutes allow that any one of, that any one of multiple owners has the right to develop and occupy the land. Um, everybody good with those changes?
Yep.
Yeah.
Should we add tendency in common? I know that was the phrase.
That'd be good.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Scrolling down, under Review and Finalize the List, um, List of Changes to Forms, um, Marsha updated it, so it says the signed permit application form will be reviewed if and when the updated ordinance is passed. And then same with the following sentence, the subdivision application form will be reviewed when the updated ordinance is completed.
I just didn't want it to sound like we didn't have some ordinances that we were writing this with kind of thing, so.
Cool, yeah. Perfect. Okay, Item Three, Work on Land Use Clearance Versus Building Permit Differences. Um, Marsha changed the first sentence to the Commissioners discussed items to be considered in the future, but postponed further review until after receiving legal input and the outcome of the final agreement between town and the county building department. And then I added, they noted a lack of clarification on whether a land use clearance is required or can be exempt for a building less than two hundred square feet, and Podmore will follow up with the town attorney. Do those changes sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wow, good job, everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice job, Kathleen. That was a big discussion, so.
Yeah. I motioned to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session Minutes from April twelfth, edited as discussed.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion passed unanimously. Minutes approved with changes. Thank you. Um, okay, so now moving on to our regular agenda, we will bump up Item Six, which is Presentation from Mike and Jacob Hanson, um, on the State Mandated Subdivision Code Update. So, gentlemen, um, I'll give the floor to you, and you should have screen sharing capability if you need that.
All right, hi, everyone. I'm not sure if Mike wants to kick us off with, you know, I don't know. I heard he already did the intro or so. Camera's off, maybe he'll jump in here in a minute, but, um, I can just go ahead and get started.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, oh, hi, there you are.
Yeah, no, here I am kicking it off. Uh, no, thank you, uh, for working with us on your, uh, subdivision ordinance update. Just as a quick reminder, it is a state mandate. That's the first thing all towns need to be reminded of is, yes, you have to do it, even you. Um, it's a, an update to hopefully make your subdivision process a little more streamlined, a little easier to work with from developers and, you know, folks that want to do stuff with their land. There are some limits and, and some policy discussions, though, that we need to talk you through and probably ought to just let Jacob go through. We have a, a quick slide deck we can share with you, you know, kind of how we interpret the code, and then there's some forks in the road policy-wise, and we just need some input uh, from you all about, you know, what direction you want us to go.
All right, yeah, so I can go ahead and, um, walk you through this short presentation that we have. Are, just, I don't know, before I do that, did any of you have a chance to review the, uh, compliance memo that we sent back in January? Okay. I guess, yeah, I'm sure you don't, you know, recall what all your thoughts were, you know, three months later, but, um, we can also walk through that later because that's gonna go a little bit more granular than our presentation. Basically, what we did was we looked at what your code says currently, we compared it to the state law, highlighted all the insufficiencies, and then what our presentation will do is just kind of walk you through the big policy decisions, assuming that you like what we wrote up in the memo. So, let's see, um, I'll just share my screen real fast. All right, can everyone see this PowerPoint then?
It's slowly pulling up.
It's, it's pulling up. There we go. Yeah.
Sweet. All right. So there were two laws that affect your subdivision code, and one was from last year, that's SB one seventy-four, and then HB four seventy-six is actually from this year. The legislature went back and touched it again. So there are a few things actually based on the memo that we sent you in January that are incorrect now. Um, but, so here's, here's basically the recap. The high-level things of what the law changed, first of all, it only applies to applications for one-to-two family, including duplex and townhome applications. So if you get, you know, a maverick coming in, wants to subdivide, that's not gonna fall necessarily within the scope of this law, but if you'd like, we can write your code in such a way that all the applications follow the same process, and it just so happens to be compliant with the one- and two-family residential requirements from the state. So at least for talking for one- and two-family residential, Town Council is no longer going to be the decision-maker for preliminary or final applications. Planning Commission can't be in charge of the final application approval, but they can be involved in the preliminary process. The town can require, um, improvement plans only in preliminary or final phases. So, I mean, there are some weird changes. That one is one of the weirdest ones, but the idea is you only touch the improvement plans one time. The town only has four review cycles when considering subdivision improvement plans. So either in the preliminary or the final, uh, phase, whichever one you choose to review those, the idea is you touch it four times, the developer has to respond four times, and then we just call it good, and you approve it if it's compliant, or you deny it if it's not compliant at that point, excuse me, at that point. And then each phase there has thirty business days, so it's still quite a long time to get back to them, but there's, you know, now a limit. And then, um, you have to approve applications if they're compliant. There's no, like, you know, public clamor saying, not in our town, no townhomes, you know, whatever. If your zoning says it's okay, you gotta say yes. And then this last bullet point is actually really interesting because it basically allows the town to combine your preliminary and final applications into one, which, if you think about it, actually, uh, circumvents some of these other restrictions, where if you can only, like, e- examine your subdivision improvement plans traditionally in the final or the preliminary process, you could just combine them and have one application, and then the Planning Commission can be in charge of the whole thing, and you can just review the improvement plans along with any of the other applicant, application requirements, like the plat and land use and stuff like that. So that's something that we'll talk a little bit more about. Okay, so just at a high level, the way we interpret this change in the law is just to kind of break out your process like this. There's the political process, which is all about your zoning, and that's still with the Town Council and, you know, the regular, you know, a, a recommendation process from the Planning Commission. But then for the subdivision process and the state law is emphasizing that it's an administrative process, not a political one. So again, it's just all about checking the boxes, and then, of course, at the end, you get your permits and all that, which is even, which is also administrative. Okay, so we basically have two approaches that we've cooked up that you can choose from, that, they're not the only approaches. We could, you know, invent a third one, but these should give you, um, a couple of ideas about what we can draft for you. So the first one is basically saying, let's combine the preliminary and the final processes into one, and then just let the Planning Commission be in charge of the whole thing. So, as you can see, this is just a flow chart of how it would look. Basically, there's an optional pre-application meeting. That's at the applicant's request, and then they start the review cycle only when they submit a complete application. So that means that if they give you an application that's half-baked, they don't have all the signatures, they don't have their plat, you know, whatever else, then you can just say, well, your review period hasn't started. Get back to us once you've completed your application. So once they give, and that's like, that's actually a key to making this work. So to prevent developers from just kind of bulldozing over the town, you just need to make sure that your application requirements are thorough, and so that's something that we're gonna be working on in our draft, is just to make sure that everything that you need to make a good decision to comply with ordinances and all that, it's all there. Um, so anyway, they start the process, they go through four times. This is another caveat. I don't know if it was on the previous slide, but you can hold a public hearing. Really, the purpose of it is just to, I don't know, ask the neighbors if there's any technical reason why the improvement plans aren't gonna work or something like that, you know, like, is there good drainage in the area or whatever? Um, it's not for, you know, not-in-my-town clamor, but, um, you, you can do that, but if you do, it has to be with the preliminary phase. Anyway, so again, streamline a process, combine it all into one. This is option number one. Okay, so option number two is more the traditional approach. It just sticks with preliminary. So again, similar, but this is your preliminary phase. Ideally, we'd have, I mean, we can make it, like, the land use authority be whoever you want, but assuming you want the planning and zoning to be in charge of at least the preliminary, you, you know, discuss your improvement plans, you still have high requirements for what a, a completed application looks like. And then at the end, you approve the preliminary, and then moving on to the final, you have, you know, town staff, or you could honestly have whoever you contract as your engineer be the, you know, land use authority for the final processes. You could have your city attorney as well, since the final plat, at least the way that we like to structure it, it involves a lot of legal documents, like, you know, dedications to, um, the tat- one of improvements and things like that. And so, um, I don't, I don't know if you want to stare at this. Basically, um, this is, well, we can send these to you if you want, but that's kind of the general idea. So, um, yeah, so we have some policy questions. First one, and this is just looking at those two different processes, what are your thoughts on, do you want to do a traditional or combined approach or something different?
Marsha, go ahead.
Thank you, um, for showing it to us in a, a discernible manner. Um, I think one of the, uh, points of, of discussion here that may be important to us hasn't really happened, and that is Town of Bluff does not have the building department, a town attorney, a town attorney, or anyone else. We are in the fact, um, we have an attorney we like to, and we have a lot of other works, so when he can, he helps us, and he's good, he just isn't available. Um, and more importantly, the county building department works with us, and we are just, as we've been told by the mayor recently, in the throes of making all that happen. So one of the, um, one of the problems perhaps, or challenges with determining policy one, I mean, choice one and choice two, would be who's first in line doing this. For example, normally, it might be the building department receives all the paperwork, goes through it, makes sure it's all there, and Planning and Zoning takes over and can do final and, you know, a, a preliminary and final altogether, because we've been given a full packet of information. However, with no one in those positions to give it to us, typically, the paperwork comes to us first. So now you have Planning and Zoning doing the oversight, if you will, and then becoming either preliminary or final or both. So I'm wondering what Hanson and Company sees for us in that dilemma.
Well, certainly, yeah, that is obviously one of the biggest issues. If you don't have a big staff or anything like that, then how are you gonna manage this? I guess I should clarify that when I say being in charge of, you know, the preliminary, final, both, whatever, it really only applies to who gives the stamp of approval. So who is the final land use authority? So we can definitely draft it, where if you have your building department or whoever else be the one to collect applications and kind of do a first read-through. We can write that in as like, either the, the process of just making sure the application's complete, and then also just as a preliminary, um, I mean, preliminary to the preliminary, you know, just like a review before they hand it off to you, that's totally fine. So it's really just like, you can delegate however you want. It's just about who has the final say. That's what the state law talks about.
Okay, in that case, my opinion, as it were, is that land use, uh, the land use, uh, decision final comes through um, Planning and Zoning, because we're the ones that would be going through it. That's just one opinion.
Makes sense.
Thanks, Marsha.
Jac- Jacob, did you say that the Planning and Zoning, so Planning and Zoning can be the first three steps of the four-step review, but the final, final, I know it can't be Town Council, can be Planning Commission in their case, right?
Well, I honestly, I don't, so if you're sticking with the traditional process, that's one of the biggest hang-ups, is I don't think the Planning and Zoning can be in charge of the final application, being the land use authority for final application. But if you combine them into one process, then the Planning Commission can be in charge of the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah.
That was my, my question, was just a, a confusion over the, um, approving authority. So if we did the traditional, it, it still can't be the Town Council. Who would be the approver? It would be the Town Council.
No, no, sorry. So you're correct.
Yeah, you're correct. So neither, yeah, for, yeah, sorry, um, Town Council just can't be the land use authority for anything related to subdivisions, and the Planning Commission is restricted to the first, basically, the preliminary phase.
So who would be the authority, uh, if, on a traditional approval, if it was not Planning and Zoning or Town Council?
Most cities just go with city staff, so if you have more, you know, people in your department, you'd have, you know, your engineer or whatever be in charge. So like, some, some towns use their attorney, some, some their engineer, some just, I don't know. Okay, hold on. I guess there is one other solution, especially for like a town like yours where you wear a lot of hats. What you can do is technically create a subdivision review committee, some other body that is all the same people, but with a different name, and I think you can get away with that. So like, if you want the Town Council to have some say, then you can just create this entity that's gonna be in charge of it, and it's, it's kind of like a sneaky way to get around the law. Um, but as long as it's not like everyone on the Town Council, and only the people in the Town Council who are on this, like, other body, then I think you can get away with it. So I guess that is another option.
Okay. Um, so we heard from Marsha. I would, I'll just, since I'm un-miked, I'll say, um, because, right, this is applying to one-to-two-family residential applications, not larger subdivisions, my preference is to go with the combined model in which Planning and Zoning is the approving body, and in which the process is generally streamlined, which I think works with our capacity as a volunteer board and a understaffed town. So that's my preference. Malia, do you want to state what yours is?
Sure. Um, I agree that I think that the combined makes more sense with, like, the reasons that Amanda said, and with needing to create a whole new committee. If we were to go traditional, it just seems like a little bit extra work that I don't think anybody in town really has time for right now.
Yeah, and, and there's one part that's kind of seems a little obscure, but as I was thinking about Bluff a little bit, um, you, as a town, can still say you want to go with the traditional, including Town Council, you know, like the way you're doing it now. Town Council can be the approvers for anything commercial, you know, like that hotel you had right there on the north end of town, and any kind of sensitive lands, and I haven't looked yet, but I, you guys just updated your general plan, right? Did you identify any areas of sensitive development areas?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, okay, all right.
Is that, is that a new state code requirement?
It's just part of this one. It's just a nuanced piece of it, but, yeah, if you have like a big flood plain or, uh, you know, like a hilly area or something like that, um, I'm thinking Rockville for some reason, uh, over there by Zion. Um, they have a really interesting slope situation, and those subdivisions, regardless of whether it's one or two or a Walmart, it all goes through their traditional process, but it sounds like that's kind of a moot point for Bluff, so never mind.
That is a really good point. All right, so so far I'm hearing that combined approach, at least for this, you know, one-to-two-family, is gonna be the way to go. Uh, let me know if you revise that opinion later. So here's the next, uh, question for you all. I skipped one. Uh, no, that's for traditional. Okay, yeah, so I guess it's, yeah, the next logical question is, should we have the same process for everything or two different processes? Like, basically, the way we can draft this amendment is we can add a chapter to the end of your subdivision title that just addresses everything, one-to-two-family residential, or we can essentially incorporate and replace what you currently have so that it says, um, you know, everything is gonna go through this single process, but, for example, with the commercial or anything that isn't one-to-two-family residential, um, you're gonna have, you know, longer review times, or potentially the Town Council is the land use authority, or whatever other alterations you want to make.
So for commercial, we could still, if we kept that part of our code the same, we could still have the Town Council be the approving authority?
Yeah, certainly, and whether or not you keep what you currently have, we can still make that happen, even if we did a combined approach and basically drafted it so that it's like all applications go through this one process, but then there's maybe like a table that's like, if it's one-to-two-family residential, then the Planning and Zoning decides, and if it's commercial, then the Town Council decides. Like, we can, like, yeah, I guess we can break it up that way, or we can just leave what you currently have if it's working.
We don't know if it's working because we haven't had a subdivision come forward. So whatever we do today is like to clarify, clean up, and lighten the load of whatever we do in the future. So that's why I think all of us have been leaning towards this combined motion of moving forward. I would say my opinion on this would just be if there's, if we, if we get as far as we can, and then it's commercial, the final say would be the town, and I think that I like that because of the way this town works. Oh, no one told us that. Oh, we didn't know that. Oh, we didn't hear that, and who said so? And so I think, um, I think I like the idea of, you know, one-and-two-family housing and things like that. I think we have no problem just saying it works, and then commercial because it brings more to the table, but there's one more body to look at it.
I agree with Marsha on that one. Thanks, Malia.
Yeah, I think that also makes sense, given that they're the body that's voted in, and commercial decisions can have, seem like they have larger impacts. So I'm, I think housing is something that we all. Streamlining housing sounds great to me.
Great, all right.
Let me just, uh, really quickly, Ed, do you have an opinion on this?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, sorry, back to you, Jacob.
All right, no, okay, we'll definitely, okay, so what we'll do is we'll draft this and we'll essentially replace what you currently have, but we'll, you know, keep the good elements of it, and then we'll make sure that the Town Council is in charge of, you know, applications that the, that the state allows them to be in charge of, and we'll do the combined process for everything, just to keep it simple. Great. Okay, so, yeah, so we talked about this. It's gonna be the Planning and Zoning. All right, Appeal Authority, we just default to making the Town Council the Appeal Authority for when your Planning and Zoning makes a decision. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. And I guess this depends, I guess you said, like, you know, you don't have a lot of subdivisions, so maybe you don't know, but are there any things in particular that you want to change while we're touching it anyway?
I, I took your ti- I read the subdivision ordinance quickly the other day, along with your memo, to just see. I, I didn't finish it all, but I, I got an idea of where we stand, and I think, I think we did the basic sort of copy what a subdivision ordinance looks like. In other words, all the things that you have to have. So with you bringing us up to date on the actual, um, legal requirements, as it were, I think the only other things would be just to double-check uh, definitions and other pieces of it, to make sure it all matches what we really think and what we've, because we've lately discovered a few things on our own or other ordinances that have been like, oh, we said the wrong thing. So, yeah, I, I think this whole rewrite will be good.
Um, so I have two questions. Uh, one is who would be the Appeal Authority, uh, for the ones that Town Council approves?
So, I mean, you can do a couple of different things. You could have like a Board of Adjustment that you create, or you can um, just make him appeal to the District Court. I think those are like the two most common options. Technically, you can make whoever you want be the Appeal Authority, though.
Okay.
And ideally, not the same person who approved it the first time. That's like the only kind of restriction.
Okay, and then I think we would keep it District Court. I think that's what we have now. Um, my second question is, are you are, because I know the state is, is compensating you for this work, which we really appreciate, as a small town. Are you, um, just amending our subdivision ordinance, or are you like, are you able to just like scratch ours and write a whole new one from scratch?
Yeah, we could, we could start over from scratch. That's like totally within the scope. I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, like, our job basically is just to help you get compliant with state law, and, you know, as long as it's And, you know, as long as it's reasonably related to that, we can do it. So honestly, it is easier just for everyone, everyone's like reviewing purposes, like just to kind of start over sometimes. Rather than like having a million red lines. So whatever your preference is, we can do that. So if you want us to be surgical, we can do that. And if you prefer just to start with a new draft and then just go from there, then that's fine too.
Marcia, go ahead.
No, to follow up, Amanda, is that the next one question then? Did, did Hanson Company Inc. we need a new one? Did you go, whoa, this has a lot of old stuff that we don't do? Or did you bring us up to date more easily with a new one? Or did you like what we had and just need to fix it?
So overall, I, I thought what you had is pretty good. Um, just like, we could make it simpler, though, if we started over. And I guess when I say start over, I don't mean like just include nothing that you currently have. Because as it is, when we're, if we're basically going with the idea that all applications are gonna go through the same phase, we basically need to amend most of the rest of the process. So what we'll do is we'll keep all of your uh plat requirements, all of your development standards that you already have. And then we'll add new ones where we think that it would be useful or required by state law. And then that's really the main pro, excuse me, the main task for everyone to like review those requirements. Make sure we've fully defined what a complete application it looks like and so forth. And then, um, so I guess in a way, it's, it's like, well, maybe we'll start with a new document, but it's gonna include a lot of the content that you currently have.
Okay. Yeah, I think it makes sense to go with whichever course you prefer, like starting from scratch, but or editing ours. It sounds like you prefer to start from scratch, but include some of our content, so.
Yeah, but that's probably gonna be the, the best approach. But honestly, um, once I dive in a little more, then I'll be able to, you know, send, I'll send you a draft. Hopefully it makes sense and I'll go from there.
One, one more question. Does this, um, does the state make a distinction in this new requirements for subdivisions of one to two residential spaces? Do they make a distinction on the size of those houses or does that not matter? It's just the number?
They don't exactly make a distinction, except for whether, if you're dealing with a minor subdivision, which you can define as a town, but it's anything less than ten lots, in that case, you don't need a plat. But all of the other restrictions that we talked about are still at play. So I don't know if you would like to do that. I mean, in theory, it's just a little easier for the developer or, you know, just to split off a couple of lots from an existing parcel. If, if you, but like one danger with minor subdivisions is sometimes you can get into situations where you have a larger plot and then a developer will just kind of carve off like one or two parcels at a time and then essentially make a large development over a couple of years. So if you think that'll be a problem, or you just don't see the reason for having like an exception to the regular process, then uh we won't include a minor subdivision process. But um we can also throw it in the draft and then you can let us know if you like it.
Yeah, let's keep, keep it in there, since that's the process we have now and just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, any other thoughts on this? I think it's about the end of my uh slide deck. So, you know, I'll stop sharing, but I, I think Mike had to step out for another meeting. But um, that's all that I have. So I guess if you'd like, we can go over the, the compliance memo. Basically, it, in fact, here, maybe I will just pull it up real fast. I don't, there wasn't much aside from what we've talked about. Those, those are the main things. It's mainly about, um, let's see. Improving your definitions, improving your plat requirements. There are a few things where you have to notify, like the Utah Geospace Resource Center. It's just like a random thing that the state requires.
What is that? I'm sorry. What's a geospace center? Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just.
Totally. Um, so I don't know everything that they do, but it's essentially so that nine one one has a, an idea of what your neighborhood looks like. So they can respond at things like that. It's basically just showing them, yeah, like what the new neighborhood looks like. So actually, yeah, so honestly, that's the one other thing that we mentioned in our memo that I just wanna uh mention again is the process for subdivision amendments. I know, um, I didn't see one in the code. Basically, we can just make it super simple where you just go back and do the same process as if you were creating a new one. Or we can, you know, be more creative there. But, and that's maybe something to think on. And once you see like what the first draft looks like for the main process, then, you know, we can talk more about that. But that's just something to keep on your radar. Alright, well, that's, that's all that I have. So any thoughts, questions, other comments?
Just ti- just timing. Can you tell us where we're, what the timeline looks like?
Sure. I mean, if you, if you think that you're going to have applications coming in soon that this would apply to, then we can definitely try to expedite it. Um, I mean, it, I guess it really depends on what you need, but we could get you a draft in, you know, two weeks for sure. As far as like the whole thing wrapped up, I mean, once we get you a draft, it's really just depends on like what kind of feedback you give and how we revise and things. But we can definitely have this finished within two months would be, would be plenty, I think. Does that work? Or is there like an urgent need to go try to go faster or? Cause, okay, here's the other thing is technically the state law is great and all that, but it doesn't actually come into effect until arguably at the earliest November, but really it's, it's December. So you can technically, so all the applications you have currently that are pending, you just can follow your current process. You don't have to follow the review deadlines, town council is in charge, all that. And um, so technically, we don't have to rush on this. We can, but it's really up to you.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, there's, there's not a rush on our end. So I think if you can get us the draft within the next couple of weeks, we'll take at least a week to review it in advance of our meetings, which are twice a month, so. Yeah, but we don't have, yeah, so not too expedited on our end.
Okay, sounds good. And I guess I'll, I'll keep you updated. Um, yeah, it might be two weeks, might be three, but we'll, we'll definitely won't forget about you, so.
Yeah, that sounds great. Um, okay. Well, thank you so much for your time tonight. We really appreciate it, especially after hours, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, totally. Always happy. Um, I guess all that then, but yeah, thank you. It's good to meet you all.
Yeah, thank you. Sinclair.
Thanks.
Thank you. See ya.
Thanks. Okay, wonderful. Um, then if folks are ready, we'll move on to item one on our agenda, which is update from town council, including update on the draft sign ordinance that was sent to town council.
Okay, so, um, yeah, we've had just a, a regular meeting April ninth, and then we had a work session yesterday. And we are going to do another regular meeting on the twenty third instead of having uh one last night. So we didn't have a regular meeting last night. And as far as the sign ordinance goes, we did work on it in the, the work session. And we've all come to a consensus of what we like. We just made a few edits, really. Um, and that is what will be on the agenda to vote on, on the twenty, let's see, be the twenty third. Yeah, it was looking, moving it along. Um, and then at the meeting last night, I guess it was the ninth. We did have a couple of public comments, one from Omar Tume. And he said that he would hope that we would all look for a few more positives rather than the, the snitching on one person in town to the next. Uh, Mark Malloy wants the engine brakes uh enforced, which is basically the part of the noise ordinance. And then, um, the uh Utah Office of Economic Development, which is Colette Cox. She came down and did a tour with a, a group of her people. And Aaron took her into the um old school and showed them what they were funding, cause they've been a big part of that funding of the EPA grant. And the EPA grant is in, um, UDB has their part in. It's uh the first one to go into this section of the woman that's managing the grants. Ours was the first one to go in to get all the work parts done, so uh they were happy and impressed. The, they're still, you know, meeting for the old school things. They wanna do another joint meeting, but nothing much else to relay on that one. Um, the fire kitchen, uh, we're gonna do a trial run. Well, we had a consensus to do a trial run. We haven't voted on it yet. Uh, do a trial run on a membership kind of idea that uh you sign up for a membership fee and then do an hourly sort of coordination. Um, so we'll see how that goes. It gave it a three-month trial run to see if it works as well as it seems like it might. Uh, there are solar panels available in Monticello from that AES who donated to them. And then they, for one reason or another, couldn't use them. So uh the mayor's gonna follow that through and see if there's gonna be any use for us on the community center or the old school or something. So that was kind of a nice little perk. And I reminded her that, you know, the, the general plan and the strategic plan talk about using alternative energy. So we'll see. We don't know what, where, what they would need to be installed and so on. But, and then we need a list uh for capital improvement projects. That'll be coming up. So that would be something like that, that would be on that list for CIB um kind of ideas. That's all I had on my list, but are there questions?
No more questions.
Okay. Alright, you're welcome.
Great. Okay. Item two under old bus, business, um, status update on updating the planning and zoning forms for our website. So as a reminder, we talked about that at our work session last week, made some actionable to do items for changing those forms. Um, on Sunday, I did update the following forms, meeting all of the require, all the changes we've outlined. I updated the agenda request form, the land partition application form, um, the planning and zoning town council recommendation form, the variance form, and the zoning amendment request form. So that was five forms I updated in total. I did the easiest ones. We still have to do like the land use clearance form and stuff. But, um, that said, I forgot to send those final versions out to you all. So I don't know if, um, if we need to vote to approve them and wait till next meeting, or if I could just, it's more of an administrative action. So if I could just send them to Aaron, I'm fine doing that, but.
That, that's why I was just.
Yeah.
But that because we administratively said we were doing this as housekeeping, I think it's fine for you to do the ones that we already corrected and only have the few that we need to talk about left.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I trust you. Thank you for your work on that.
Totally. I enjoyed a coffee while I was doing it. At a, at a fine, fine dining establishment in town. Um, okay, then I guess the final, the second piece to that item two is next steps on that. I think I said I would take on the updating, so I just need to keep working at on them. So, except we can't do subdivision or sign permit yet. But I'll, I'll start making some of the changes in the land use clearance request form, knowing that will take a little while. And we, we still have some outstanding questions, so. Sound good? Okay. Um, item, it says five, but it should be three on our agenda, land use clearance applications. Uh, we have none. Anybody have any updates or questions on land use clearances? Okay. The next item, we, we already did the Hanson presentation. So next would be approval of the site application form for placement on our website. So I will go ahead and share my screen. As a reminder, um, after somebody in town used the form, we, we found it was lacking in ways. And so we worked with the town attorney to update the application for site plan review. Um, have folks had a chance to look at this final draft form? Marcia, okay.
Um, I wrote a couple of notes, but I didn't have a way to put them on the form. So, um, one of the notes I wrote was that somewhere we talk about, um, let's see, I'm a little out of order here, but, um, oh, level two notifying us, oh, there's a little difference or a little, I'm a little confused about level two applications say they have to put a sign on the property, telling people that they're doing what they're doing. But we don't have to have a public hearing, or we do. And I, I just got a little confused by that. Um, let's see.
I think that's um based on the state statute.
Oh, okay. And so it's an either or or a both or, okay.
It's not subject to public hearing, but they do have to notify.
Oh, and that, uh, and that was part of it too, because it says you have to notify in a form approved by the town. What is that form? That's what I, there we go. Level two applications are not subject to a public hearing. However, the applicant is responsible for delivering notice of the pending application in a form approved by the town to adjacent property owners. Do we say what that form is? Cause I didn't see it in the code, but I got so confused by all of them. Is there a specific form? Or is it, I will write a letter to each of the contiguous neighbors? Is that what they mean?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it means, means a fillable form. I think it means whatever manner the town has approved or so.
That one's just a little weird. That's, that's what it was that caught me. In a form approved by the town. So the town will say, thank you, Mr. Smith. We, you know, here's your application stuff. Now go na- notify the contiguous, contiguous neighbors. And he'll say, I'm sending a postcard, and they get to say that's okay? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
That's how I read it. Yeah. So in that case, maybe it should say in a manner approved by the town and maybe not form. Because a form sounds like it's a piece of paper that we have for you to fill out.
Yeah, maybe that's a good way just to make it easier. Um, thank you.
I'll put that in our notes.
The other.
Or we could create a form.
Yeah. The next one I put down was, it talks about lighting, but it doesn't use the words, um, night sky, whatever we call our skylight ordinance. What it, um, and let's see, where does it say it? Somewhere where you have to, um, include lighting, include all point parking, drive lights. Is it on that list? Keep going, maybe of the list of things they have to do. Is it on that?
It is under parking and loading. Let's see. Lighting plan.
Lighting plan. There we go. See, and it just, we now have an ordinance that it could refer to, is what I'm thinking. Just, just lighting plan. All lighting show, will be shown to comply with dark. And we could shorten that whole thing to just say, all lighting plan must be subject to dark sky ordinance. Right?
Yeah, and then even for the one above it, for the conceptual sign plan, when we get a sign ordinance, kind of a similar statement. Saying that all signs meet the sign ordinance.
Yeah, we just don't have to redefine it on paper here. We just.
Yeah. Cause we've talked about before how we don't have to say you must comply with all the town ordinances, because that's a given and redundant. But I do think we could eliminate some of the.
Redundancy.
Specifics in the lighting requirements, since that's in our outdoor lighting ordinance.
Yeah.
So, but we would still probably, it, it's, it says it should, it needs to include the manufacturer's information. So we would need to keep some of that in.
Wait, so in our dark sky ordinance, we don't have anything requesting manufacturer's information if you're coming in? No, because lighting is part of you. Okay.
Yeah. So it sounds like we would change lighting plan to reference the outdoor lighting ordinance, but still leave in.
Why do they, why do they ask for the manufacturer, do you know? If your, if your lights meet the requirements, like they, all, most of the new boxes of outdoor lighting, when I finally got to the store and looked, they say compliant with dark sky, or they'll say lumens, or they'll say, you know, they'll, they'll have a whole thing on the packaging, but if I'm the land, I'm the owner building a house and I know I have to meet the requirements, why do I have to tell you what they make that for?
I don't know. That's in our ordinance, though. Oh, I'm pretty sure that, I'm not sure, not pretty sure. I am sure that Erin took these from the ordinance and like made them into checkboxes.
Ah, 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 okay, okay, okay. That ma, does make a difference, because we're trying to match. Okay, well, leave it there and we'll question it later.
But but still change this to reference the outdoor lighting.
Yeah, just making it simpler that, you know. All mounted floodlights that direct outward toward other properties and roadways are prohibited. Well, they are in the dark sky ordinance, so you could leave out the sentence. I don't know. I mean, maybe you can't because of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if with the manufacturer's information, we could say if requested by planning and zoning, kind of like we did on some of those other ordinance where it's basically, we can say, you know, we don't actually need that, but then we're still following the ordinance in these applications.
But the people may have already.
Comma, if required or something.
We could put a check below it where we say the applicant requests to waive requirement for manufacturer's information.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
And the only other comment I wrote in my notes for this one was, will there be any changes once the subdivision ordinance is gone through? That this might carry over to, and I, I don't know that. I'm just throwing that out there. So, because this isn't a subdivision request, but it has so much of the same stuff.
Um, I don't necessarily think they overlap, and they wouldn't with the state code changes. Can they?
Okay, I guess we can just, after we're done with subdivision, maybe we could just double check if anything changed definition-wise or anything that didn't make sense.
Okay, um, anybody else have any comments? I'm just scrolling down, but my computer's quite slow. We are requiring evidence of title, so that way we'll know if there's multiple owners. Wow, my computer is really slow. Doesn't like this. Okay, any other changes?
Nothing that I saw. Thanks, Marcia.
Okay. So I guess I would entertain. Um.
Oh, that would make sense, Ed. Go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, I would. Well, it's back to the question of if we need a motion to entertain a form, or to approve a form, which I don't think we do, but I will go, oh, Marcia, go ahead.
No, wasn't Erin's point that she needed us to approve it because it had gone to the attorney? I'm not sure. I, I'm happy with you just putting it up there, because we, we've done so much work on it, but did Erin ask us to approve it?
Yeah, well, and so then in that regard, I would entertain a motion to approve it with the changes we've discussed today.
Okay, there you go. Now Ed can say so. I'll second.
Okay, second from Marcia. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of, of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion approved. Um, I will work with Erin to, to update that form. Okay, great. Okay, stop sharing this and then move on to, um. Okay, item eight was um, new business from our, an outcome of our last work session, um, which is the discussion of do, do our ordinances require you to get a land use clearance for any type of construction or placement of a structure on your land, or is there somehow a two hundred square foot smaller exemption? Um, so I asked folks to like look into that, and I also emailed the town attorney about this question. I have not heard back from him, just. Um, so that's my update there. Anybody have any thoughts on this issue of, we have thought or maybe wanted to have um, an exemption for land use clearances if you were building less than two hundred square feet, but we're not sure that we have that in our ordinance. Anybody, did, did anybody do any more digging on that? I, what I emailed the attorney was for clarification on that, but also if we wanted to create an exemption saying if you're, if you're building or constructing, constructing, or moving something less than two hundred square feet, do we have, and we want exempted from land use clearance, can we do that administratively, or do we have to go through a whole ordinance process? So that's what I asked him. So hopefully we'll hear back soon. Cool. Any questions or comments there?
The, the only comment I would have is just the one that says, we think we do want that, so. In other words, pursuing the fact that we do want to do it, whatever Chris tells us has to get done should go on the list of to-dos, so.
Yeah, yeah. I was also wondering if we could have, if we, if he, if Chris says we have to do like an ordinance to make that change, um, and go through public hearing, we could potentially ask the town council to put a moratorium on requiring like a temporary moratorium on that activity of requiring a land use clearance for less than two hundred square feet. I don't know if that's possible, but.
I, I'm all for it. I like, I know we have to follow Chris, but boy, it seems crazy to ask people to submit LUCs for sheds.
Yeah.
Well, the only reason, the only reason it came up in question was the part about, did the person place it in the proper place? The idea that, you know, they were supposed to meet all the setbacks and things like that, and having on, on county council, on county planning and zoning, we ran across this where the man just built his shed where he wanted to build it, and it wasn't in the right place, and he ended up having to buy fifteen feet from his neighbor, because it was on the property. Pollution, and um, but all I'm saying is I agree with you, Brian. We, we really don't want to do it, but how do we pinpoint this better?
Yeah, right. Put in language that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll brief, well, I'll talk more to Anne about that, the mayor. Alrighty, um. Number nine, items from next agenda. Um, we'll have more time on the next agenda. We kind of bumped a couple of things off because of our presentation today, so we, we could revisit um, the distinction between land use clearance and building permits, if we wanted to do any work on that, or.
Yeah.
Definitely. We need to finish that, because we're all, we all want to be on the same page.
We won't have subdivision next, or, yeah, subdivision won't be back to us by then, but we could do what, we could do an update on the um, LUC for two hundred square feet or less building. Anything else?
What else was on our goals?
Yeah, are we gonna just get to RV and a work session?
Our, yeah.
Again, or?
Yeah.
I don't know. For not feeling bad, uh. You guys plan a work session forever, or want to talk about it in the next meeting, or rather find time to talk about it?
Yeah, we should probably do a work session. Um, maybe we could schedule that during other. Okay, any more for agendas? Okay, let's move on to item ten, other scheduling a work session, because we won't be meeting until, I believe, May first. Is that the next meeting? So we could, that's only in two weeks, um. And I'm, I'm unavailable next week for a work session, so maybe we, I don't know. Anybody have any proposals for a work session, or should we just wait till our next meeting to schedule one?
Let's, let's schedule it at the next work.
Yeah.
Let's schedule work session meeting, based on the fact that everybody's just coming into their spring schedules, and maybe we'll have a better handle on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good. It's not back for another week, so I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing.
Nice. Um, okay, anything else for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, we could do it.
Ed won.
So Ed, Ed did that. Go, Malia, you can second, because you were second.
Second. Malia, any discussion? Okay, favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, meeting is adjourned at seven oh three PM. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
See you soon.
Have a good night.